Welcome to Woodstock City Council. It is Thursday, October the seventh, two thousand and twenty one. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty eight subsection three point three of the municipal act. And section sixteen point six point two four of the city of Woodstock procedural by law. This meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube channel. And a recording will be posted on the city's website following the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on Rogers TV. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings, and minutes page of the city's website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, you're requested to inform the deputy clerk. And with that, I would ask that everyone turn on their web cameras. And welcome, council. There we are. And? Any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, disclosure of new business? Matters arising from the minutes? And we'll go with the minutes from our last regular meeting councillor Talbot.
Move by myself and I was going to second them by councillor Petter. At the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. We have no presentations or delegations. So next up will be the consideration of planning reports and we have the request for the deeming bylaw. Councillor Tate.
Do we need a seconder?
There we go, councillor Talbot.
I'll make the motion that Woodstock City Council deny the request for a deeming bylaw as it applies to lot twenty three and block twenty seven of the registered plan forty one M dash one eight seven.
Thank you. Discussion. And we do have our planner with us. Would you? Want to hear anything more on the matter, or should we go straight to the vote? We'll go straight to the vote. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have our opponents. And that would be the Woodstock Hospital Foundation. They have been doing an amazing job doing fifty fifty. Draw that. It's been taking place monthly and replace some of their other fundraising activities. And they're now requesting to have those signs continue and have that draw go until the end of January of two thousand and twenty two. And we'll go with councillor Accione and councillor Lauder.
Thank you, worship. Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council support the Woodstock Hospital Foundation's request for temporary advertising signage at the following locations. Until January thirty first, two thousand and twenty two, Southside Park, Highway fifty nine, Juliana Drive, downtown Woodstock. Devonshire Ave and County Road four, Van Sitterd Ave and County Road seventeen, Van Sitterd Ave and Ingris Hall Ave, Van Sitterd Ave and Devonshire Ave. Parkinson Road and Oxford Road four, Parkinson Road and Beards Lane, Highway two and Highway fifty five, Mill Street and Clark Road and Standard Tube Park.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. Get your tickets. And next up, we have the Southgate Centre Board of Directors, a request for a councillor to be appointed. And we'll go with mover of councillor Schattenberg and second or councillor Tate.
Yeah, the Woodstock City Council appoint a councillor Connie Lauder to the Southgate Centre Board of Directors. For the term of council, which does end on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Twenty two? Must be two thousand and twenty one.
Two thousand and twenty two. And just as an explanation on that, so the election would take place prior to that, but we are in office until the. Stroke of midnight on the last day of November of two thousand and twenty two. And now discussion, I guess, first of all councillor Lauder, would you allow your name to stand?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor.
I just have to tell you one thing. It's my birthday that day.
Very good. Councillor Accioni?
Yes, I just thought I'd mention if I know councillor Lauder does a lot with different committees and everything else and in lieu of some free time lately, if. She did have a busy plate, I certainly wouldn't mind sitting on this committee as well to help them out, but I thought I'd just throw it out there. That's all.
Thank you. Thanks for the offer. Further discussion? Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks. Through the mayor, just maybe just a general comment. We don't know the Southgate Centre is this kind of was bursting at its seams pre COVID and probably is doing so now as well and. Had a building committee to do a bit of an expansion over there and at that point in time, they'd requested somebody from. City Council to join their Board of Directors, which obviously made sense with the money that could be spent there on an addition at some point. And Ron Fraser was appointed at that point in time. And of course, sadly, Ron Fraser has passed away. So I think it's very important both for Southgate Centre. And for our Woodstock City Council to have a to have a member on that board and and I think Connie Lauder would do a terrific job. I must point out though, Connie, I'm fifty five too now, so I'm eligible to get a membership.
That's right. Get that in there.
I'll see if they all let you in.
And I think Connie's Connie's fifty six, so she's qualified as well. Councillor Tate?
Yeah, I just want to comment why I second it. Councillor Lauder does sit on a lot of our committees, but she always comes prepared. She reads all the agendas and she shows up at all the meetings. And I do believe they kind of requested councillor Lauder because they know how much work she puts into it. So that's why I second the motion and fully support councillor Lauder in that position.
Thank you. Further discussion? I guess on the other hand, maybe not. Okay, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. Congratulations on your new appointment. And I know that we'll be hearing more from the representatives from the Southgate as we get into the budgets later on, so. Looking forward to that. So next up, we have the TMMC Assessment Appeals. And we'll go with councillor Petter and councillor Lauder. Thank you.
Yes, move that Woodstock City Council authorized staff to sign. The two thousand thirteen, two thousand twenty one minutes of settlement and memorandum of agreement related to the assessment appeals. Of Toyota Motor Manufacturing Canada Inc. And further that the shortfall related to the tax reductions with an upset limit of a million and a half be financed from the hydro reserve fund.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Lauder?
I'm just going to make a comment on what has is going around on social media. And it's incorrect statements about this appeal. They are blaming our staff for being incompetent in making such an error. And I want to let anyone who thinks this, it is not an error of our city staff. It's the assessment comes to the city and that's how we have to build. Based on that. And the only ones that can appeal that is the owner of the property. So our our staff has been working. And very hard on this appeal and to try and get it finalized. And this is the final outcome. And I wanted to thank. All the staff that has worked so hard on this. And I would like if Mrs. Hildrely would speak to this application.
Thank you, your worship through to councillor Lauder. Further to your comments, I would emphasize again that impact provides us with the assessments. What we have to build using those assessments, whether we think they're too high or too low, it makes no difference. But I want to reiterate that this is not the city's fault and it's not Toyota's fault. I believe it rests squarely with impact and their reluctance to settle this matter for almost a decade. Despite the fact that Toyota's assessment increased by almost eighty five percent between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twenty. Impact continued to assert that their assessments were correct. And they were unwilling to enter into settlement discussions despite the fact they were well aware of the potential financial impacts to the taxpayer. When a settlement was finally reached after almost a decade, it came with a price tag of more than thirteen million dollars. Our share is five and a half million dollars. Over the years, we have set aside four million dollars to deal with this. And that's why we're asking council for the additional funds today. It's not just the city that has to pay. School boards have to pay, the county has to pay, and the township of Blanford Blenheim has to pay. I would suggest that if we have to use the assessments provided by impact, then I think it's their responsibility. That they make sure they're reasonable and that they're accurate. They should also work closely with their municipal partners and have regard to the financial impact of these errors. Clearly, this did not happen. And as a result, there's a significant cost to a number of taxpayers and all of ours and a loss of confidence in the process. We will be writing to the Board of Directors of MPAC, the Ministry of Finance, our local MPP, and the Premier of Ontario. To let him know what our concerns are and hopefully they will take some action to ensure that this. A refund of this magnitude never happens in the other municipality.
Thank you. Councillor Tate?
Yeah, through your worship, just to follow up on councillors. Lauder's comments and we should be very thankful that our staff had the hindsight to put this money away while we were fighting this. This has taken years and years and years. I had a couple of nasty comments too. People not understanding the process. You know, for at least for the taxpayers of Woodstock, our staff has put the money aside. I know one point five million is still a lot, but they put it up. Some of these other areas like Blanford Blenheim, it's a huge. Blow to them and the amount of money that they're going to have to pay back and they haven't been able to put the money aside that our staff has put. So. We have to be very thankful of our city treasurer, the work she's done and the rest of staff for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the. Dundas Street demolition completion for the property located next to City Hall. We'll go councillor Talbot and councillor Accioni.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorize an increase of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. For the four eighty six, four eighty eight Dundas Street demolition completion to be funded by Capital Projects Reserves. And notice is hereby given that the two thousand and twenty one, twenty twenty six capital budget is amended accordingly.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the landscape design and tree management guidelines councillor Schattenberg and the seconder will be councillor Petter.
Thanks. That Woodstock City Council approved the landscape design and tree management guidelines. And further, the city council referred the changes to municipal code chapter seven, six, two, trees protection of municipal code chapter seven, six, three, trees. Protection privately owned lands to the bylaw section of the agenda. And for the city council authorized the city clerk make the necessary application in the ministry of the attorney general. To seek approval for the proposed short form wording and said fine changes associated with the municipal code. Chapter seven, six, two, trees protection and municipal code chapter seven, six, three, trees. Protection privately owned lands.
Thank you. And? Discussion and we'll start with councillor Schattenberg.
Yeah, I'm not sure if our director of parks and the recreation, Brian Connors, or our parks supervisor, Rita Ryan, will tackle the subject, but. Maybe it's a two part question, both the the fact that there's fines attached to these code changes. And just generally why this had to happen in the in the first place as far as updating some of the guidelines for the city.
Your worship through to the councillor's question. And we staff had noticed that there were some holes in our previous bylaws, the way they were set up, so we. Tightened up the strings so that we could protect our tree canopy within the city of Woodstock better.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, just a comment this time, a mayor is I did forward when our agenda came out on Monday, the the. This code of this guideline changed the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, John Enright is the forester there and he really applauds the city of Woodstock. For coming up with some of this information is there's actually a good information in the report if people wanted to read it in general, just about. Planting trees and what type of trees to to plant. So there's some good information in there as well.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the. Report regarding the filming that took place in the friendly city councillor Accioni and a second or councillor Tate?
Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council received the report regarding the lock and key filming synopsis as information.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then we have the change in the policy for the lowering of the flag councillor Tate and. Councillor Talbot?
I'm with the Woodstock City Council repeal and replace council policy GA zero one two lowering flag to have staff.
Thank you. And discussion? Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks a lot. Maybe a question to staff, the author of the report. I just had a concerned citizen asking to sort of say that the one set of flags in the city was that they were missing from the list where the. Snow Countess called them the cow flags, the corner of Springbank and Dundas. So they be included on the on the list as well? Maybe it was just a miscue to forget them.
Thank you councillor Schattenberg. Through your worship, through to councillor Schattenberg. The issue with the listing of the flags came through a senior management meeting. And so all of the senior managers compiled a list. What I can do is we can go back and see if that is actually a city flag and we can add it. As an amendment to the policy after after this. But as of right now, it's my understanding that the the list of flags included in the policy is complete.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next up, we have the animal control tender award. And we'll go councillor Petter and councillor Accioni.
Yes, I move that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign a contract for animal control services with Hillside Kennels Animal Control Limited. For the period January the first, two thousand and twenty two through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. With the option to renew for a further two years if both parties are in agreement.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And now we have the one that a lot of people have been waiting for. The community grants program. So again, that committee that helps to. Go through the applications to our community partners and the the funding coming from the OLG and our our partners there at Gateway Casinos. And councillor Lauder on that committee as well. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll move that in accordance with the community grants policy GA zero zero three Woodstock City Council allocates the following grants. For the year two thousand and twenty one, junior achievement of Southwestern Ontario Inc. Thirteen hundred dollars. K two K productions, four thousand dollars, Oxford Winds Community Concert Band, two thousand dollars. Why Not Us, two thousand dollars, Woodstock Kitten Nursery and Rescue, four thousand dollars. Woodstock Leech and Athletic Club, two thousand dollars. And further, the Woodstock City Council authorized the carryover of the balance from. Account zero two zero four dash eight three seven four seven dash zero 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 to twenty twenty two budget year. In order to provide supplemental funding for the two thousand and twenty two community grants program.
Thank you. And looking for a second or who would have been there for all that hard work last term councillor Petter? Oh councillor Petter? Yep. And then, okay, further, further discussion? And we got.
Were you waiting for me?
Yep.
Okay, if you're the mayor, I just wanted to, I don't mean to put Connie on the spot. I want to thank her for all the work she does on this committee and I want to thank the committee as well. I know how much work they do on it, but. Connie, if you could tell me, I recognize all of the. All of the community services there except for the Woodstock Kitten Nursery Nursery and Rescue. Can you tell us what that is?
Yes, I thought someone would ask this. The committee approved this request. It is a startup group of volunteers to look after abandoned cats, which falls under. For the betterment of our overall community in our bylaws. And one of their missions is to educate public on the benefits of. Spaying and neutering, microchipping and registering their pets. We this. There was quite a bit of discussion went on this with this and. I had some questions and doing this because I've never seen anything like this before either. And. It is, we did say that it would be a one time. Grant. Not to say that they wouldn't come back again, but usually with one time grants are usually for capital. And so that's that's kind of that's where it is.
Thank you. Councillor Tate?
Um, through your worship, that was going to be my comment. Just for a little bit of background, Diane Denby had contacted me. Her husband used to work for the Border Works and he was always rescuing cats down at the Border Works because they would show up there. So he brought home. They found a cat just not that long ago, near death, was able to nurse it and she knew about this woman and asked if we had anything in the city. So I said, no, we didn't unfortunately, but told her we had the grants committee. So if you're wondering where this came from. Diane did suggest to them to go to the grants committee and it is a very, very worthwhile. Group and I'm very thankful when I saw it on the agenda. I'll let Diane know that they were approved for funds, but because there are cats all over the city and they. It's very thankful there's people out there like that that will help them out. So thank you to the grants committee and thank you to Diane Demby, who just happened to know these people and got in touch.
Thank you. Further discussion councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to mention a little bit on K two K productions. They're now full time at the Movement Church in Woodstock. They used to work out of a. Big church in a village near Woodstock. Now they're working full time out of the Movement Church in Woodstock and I. Contacted Brian Bella through, of course, the social media and and I'll sing the praises of Brian Bella, but I promise you I won't sing. But anyway, nonetheless, they're doing the Sound of Music is what they're starting rehearsals for. So keep an eye out for posters for the Sound of Music. This is spring coming from K two K productions.
Thank you. Further discussion councillor Lauder?
Yes, you noticed that we've put some funding, there was some funds left and we've put it over into next year. The funding from. From this grants committee comes from the OLG and of course, due to COVID. There hasn't been any action at the OLG much. And so our funds will be. Very scarce again next year. So we tried to, you know, be be very careful in what we were spending. So that we will be able to help some people, some groups out for next year.
Thank you for that. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And that is it for the. Agenda. So we'll move along to the bylaws and councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. Move by myself and sent up by councillor Schattenberg that the following bylaws be given a first and second reading. Ninety four eighty seven twenty one, a bylaw to amend the city of Woodstock Municipal Code, chapter ninety five, treasurer deputy appointment. Ninety four eighty eight twenty one, a bylaw to repeal and replace municipal code chapter seven, six, two, trees protection. Ninety four eighty nine twenty one, a bylaw to repeal and replace municipal code chapter seven, six, three, trees. Protection privately owned land.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous councillor Talbot?
Move by myself and send up by councillor Accioni that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading ninety four eighty seven twenty one inclusive ninety eight forty nine twenty one.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And let's see, we are going to start today with councillor Petter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have anything today except to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope all the families have gotten their vaccines and can meet and not worry about it so much. Have a normal Thanksgiving dinner like they used to have. I would like to warn people on one thing because I had quite a scare a few years ago. We're right around the corner from leaf season, raking all the leaves to the to the curb and onto the street. And a couple of years ago, I had quite a scare when I was driving, I was parking on the side of the road and can't, you know how you kind of drive through the leaves because they're there. And there was a child playing in those leaves. And fortunately, I was, I saw it in time and stopped, but. Children do have a have a penchant to go to these piles and and play. So when these piles get big, which they will in the next couple of weeks. Please be careful and make sure there's nothing in there before you drive across. Anyway, have a good Thanksgiving and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
And if you're gonna jump in the pile yourself as an adult, do it on a day when the leaves aren't wet. And we'll go to councillor Lauder.
Thank you. The Woodstock Art Gallery on October the fourteenth at three P M, the assistant curator of the education Julia De Kemp. Is going, doing a virtual curator talk on the current exhibition celebration ten years in the building. The John White Company Inc. The exhibition includes artifacts and photographs from the Woodstock Museum, NHS and Oxford County Archives. Tracing the building's history of commerce and enterprises spanning three generations of the white family. And over one hundred years. And check out the what's on Woodstock for all the programs that's being offered at the library. They've got some exciting things going on. And I want to wish Alicia the best on her new position with Brant County. She'll be leaving us at the end of next week, I think. So a good luck to our deputy clerk Alicia. And happy Thanksgiving. We have so much to be thankful here in Woodstock and in Oxford County. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we'll go councillor Accioni.
Thank you worship. I too would like to say congratulations and a thank you to Alicia for everything she's done here. She's always been great to deal with. So. Thank you. It's sad for us, but a big win for them. Have your services. So wishing you the best of luck. What's on Woodstock Magazine has done a great little series. About the different tiered governments. If you open it. If you open it up on page five, they did a really nice summary here and I want to thank them. This is, has actually brought a lot of debate and a lot of people have sent me messages over the last couple of months over this. And it's, I'm really thankful for What's on Woodstock for doing this. It really has simplified it. And I really encourage everybody to read What's on Woodstock in general all the time. But really thankful for that and they'll learn a lot. Want to say a quick thank you to the Punjabi community, of course, for inviting all of council last week. For the land transfer of their new temple. And really a happy Thanksgiving to everybody from my family to yours. Safe travel if you're traveling. And of course with COVID. You know, keep your space, but let's try to be as normal as we can in a safe manner. Thanks, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Counselor Schattenberg?
Thanks. I'd like to thank everyone from the Engineering and the Works Department for their ongoing efforts to assist our Environment Advisory Committee that I've been assigned to. One event coming up through Waste Reduction Week is we'll actually be having a booth at the Farm Market on Saturday, October the sixteenth. To promote the various items that the city of Woodstock has, whether it be even rain barrels to, to promote to Woodstock. Waste Reduction Week on Saturday, October sixteenth. So be sure to take a look for the booth at the Saturday Farm Market that day. And of course, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And next up, we'll go with Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd like to say goodbye to Alicia. I promised I will be in. I said last week I'd be in and I'll be in before she goes and I'm sure she'll enjoy working closer to her home, even though we've, we will miss you. Just a comment about the downtown because still getting lots of calls and comments on it. Had a number of conversations with police officers from out of town plus. A lawyer from out of town that deals with some of the people down there. Just for the public's information, it is very frustrating for everybody. I know it's getting worse. The drugs that are out there right now are very toxic. I don't even know from what it sounds like, even if they could get into rehab, if the damage hasn't already been done because that's how bad they are. We all appreciate the work that certain individuals in the downtown are doing, but they're not helping. These people need help, but giving them free food and clothing and some of the other stuff isn't helping them. They need real help. And this makes them, this makes the whole thing worse. The justice system is terrible. The police have been trying to ticket and I think I mentioned this the last time and the lawyer told me the same thing. It's awful. There's a catch and release that is now mandated by the federal liberal government. So even if they're charged, nothing happens. I mean, the police aren't trying to be negative when they're ticketing. They're trying to get them into the system to get them the help they need. And the lawyer told me the same thing. They're just being released. And what's happening is they end up, they OD and they're dead. So giving them all this free stuff, I understand people want to help, but it's not helping. And with the, with the way the economy is going, if these people can concentrate on those that we can help. I'm sure we're going to need a lot of transitional housing, not the tiny homes that the Rotary Club discussed. But actual transition housing for those people that are going to be out of jobs. And not be able to afford where they are. Inflation is going like crazy, the cost of food and gas. And I, it would be fantastic if people would. Go to that direction and help those that are going to need it. Woodstock is a very, very generous. Community, always has been all of Oxford County. So I understand why, you know, we've got these people doing this, but it's not helping. And it's, there's a lot of people in the city and it's not just those people. I feel really bad for the people downtown. I've seen the doorways and stuff. We are not allowed to clean it up anymore and these people pay a lot of taxes. So just a thought going forward. I know it probably won't do any good, but just for the public, I've had calls. So many calls, are we doing anything? We're trying, but some stuff we just, we can't do because we can't control other people's actions. And that's it. And have a good weekend.
Thank you. And I guess I'll add one thing at this point too. There's still many people spreading the rumor that there's buses coming to town and invitations being made, et cetera. Regarding the transient and homeless issue. And of course, that is not the case. Anyway, Counselor Talbot?
Just, just on that, just so you're aware. I know there's not buses and stuff coming, but these out of town police officers I spoke to, they recognized some of the people from London. And they said, the problem is that we're giving too much free stuff. So they leave one community and they come to another community because we are so generous here. But it's not helping them and it's not helping anybody here.
Thank you for that. Counselor Talbot?
To carry on that same thread, talking to our, the county. That's one thing that at the end of the month, when they can't prove that they are from our community. They need, they have to go back to where they're from in order to get assistance. So that was very reassuring. Anyways, on a, I guess it's not a happier note, but Alicia, farewell and best of luck. Thanks for the time you spent in Woodstock. I did have something else. Oh, I know we were talking about the land transfer out. In the Punjab community was very colorful. Amazing food. I love Indian food and, but I didn't partake in any, but it sure smelt delicious. But the ceremony was very interesting and it was very kind to be invited to participate in this event that they had. And anybody that is out in the area will see the pole that is wrapped in orange ties. And that is the beginning. So it's very interesting. And other than that, I hope everybody gets to spend some time with their family this weekend, COVID safe, of course. And enjoy Thanksgiving. We have lots to be thankful for, even though there are some days we don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. And I want to again, just as we take time during some of these meetings to thank staff. And we, for example, today took time to recognize the work of the Grants Committee. And I think it's time for me to also say thank you to all of council for all that you do. And when some of these difficult things are taking place that are outside of our control. You're getting some of those calls and emails and they're for things that you didn't necessarily sign up for. But I know that each of you share that passion for our community. And you want to help get the correct information out to people and get us all continuing to work together. All the various people in the community to keep us as the friendly city. Now we have some pumpkin pies coming up with the Thanksgiving. At least I know I'll be having some pumpkin pie. And we will be seeing each other again on the twenty-first of October. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. And we have Counselor Petter, seconded by Counselor Accioni. All those in favor?